Okay, the planning board meeting is now in session. I will ask Sarah if taxes are up to date.
They are.
And Sarah, you have two sets of minutes from the last two meetings for us to vote on, to approve.
The minutes from March and May.
Well, let's do one at a time. March minutes, I'll do a roll call. Sheila?
I wasn't here.
Okay, Dan?
They're good, approved.
I say okay, George?
Okay.
And Kevin?
Okay.
All right, next set of minutes, Sheila, Sarah?
Yeah, for May.
The May meeting, everybody okay? Sheila wasn't here, Dan?
Okay, fine.
Caesar is fine, George?
Okay.
Kevin?
Okay.
Okay. Sarah, you want to run by when we go to any public comment? You want to run through how the public may comment when we go through each item?
Yes. For the applicants, for the matters, just hit the raise hand button when it's your turn to present, and I will promote you to a panelist so you can do a share screen. If any public member, any members of the public want to make any comments, they just have to hit the raise hand button, and I will allow them to speak.
Can you say something about the chat button on the bottom, too?
Yes, if anyone wants to make a comment via the chat, we can address the comments from there, too.
My screen just disappeared.
I can see you, Sheila.
I can't see anyone. Oh, I can see Ed. Oh, God.
Well, it may go away when in between presentations.
Okay.
Okay, this is the order in which we'll proceed. Number one, 202011, that's Three Dows Lane. Number two, 202008, 255 South Buckout Street. Number three, Big Sand Limited Partnership, that's 20192647 Main Street. Number four is on the next page of my notes here. 202013, Maravira Corporation, Castle Road 12. Number five would be 202012, 7-9 South Cotton Street. Number six is 202006, 2 Heritage Hill Road. Number seven would be 202015, 5 Hillside Terrace. Number eight is 202014, 29 North Echo Street. And when we start with number one, which is 202011, Three Dows Lane, Lawrence and Janice Sheps. Is the applicant available? Are we going to unmute him?
Yes, they're present.
Hello? Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, John Malone, First Malone Architecture, representing Larry Sheps. I don't know where you guys want to start. We did not receive any comments from Han, so I was hoping that we had satisfied the board's concerns. Is there anything you want to review, Caesar's, or anything we should? I can share a screen.
No, but you added the one revision of identifying the dogwood tree, and you put in a note about tree protection. Other than that, I have nothing to offer. Do you have anything to offer? John?
Yeah, no, I think that was really the only thing that we had to address. We had picked up the, we went to the ZBA, and we picked up that piece. And I think that was the only two items that we had to address.
Any comment from the board? Sheila? Dan? George? Kevin? Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yeah, no, actually, on this one, I've got two resolutions. One, because he's applying to renew the special permit for an accessory apartment, and also the site plan review, so I'll do the special permit resolution first. In April 2017, Lauren Sheps received a special permit pursuant to Article 31 of the zoning code for a one-bedroom accessory apartment in the finished space above the existing garage on his property at Three Dows Lane, subject to renewal in April 2020. In March 2020, applicant applied to renew the special permit and to expand the apartment to a two-bedroom apartment, also located in the ground level of the garage. And whereas the application shows that the proposed accessory apartment meets the requirements of zoning code section 224-201, subsections A through F and I, and whereas the building inspector and fire inspector conducted an inspection of the proposed accessory apartment in the building in which it is located and found that they comply with the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the planning board conducted a public hearing on the application on May 4th and June 3rd. Whereas no neighbors or village residents indicated there was any issue with parking, traffic noise, congestion, and the appearance of the existing apartment, and the planning board finds the renewal should not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, whereas granting this special permit is a type-two action under SECRE, and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board issues a special permit to Lauren Sheps for a two-bedroom apartment in his garage at Three Dows Lane, subject to the following conditions. One, the accessory apartment special permit shall expire three years from the date below, which is today, but may be renewed by the planning board upon application under Article 31. Two, the accessory apartment special permit shall expire automatically upon change of ownership of the building or when Mr. Sheps ceases to occupy the residence.
Okay, Mary Ann, does this require signatures?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and I sent the note around, we need to designate Sarah. I'll start with a roll call. When you vote yes, do the designation to Sarah for your signature. Sheila, a tie.
Did I vote on this?
You?
If you reviewed the application, yes.
Because I wasn't here last time.
Today?
Did you review the application, Sheila?
Yes, I reviewed the application. Okay.
Then you can vote. Well, you got to designate Sarah for your signature.
And I designate Sarah to sign for me, signature.
Dan McGellicut?
I'm the adjacent neighbor, so I can't vote.
Okay. Man Freddy votes yes, designating Sarah to sign. George?
Yes, designating Sarah.
Kevin?
Yes, and I authorize Sarah to sign on my behalf.
All right, Mary Ann, you got the second resolution for the site plan?
The other one's on the site plan approval. In March 2020, Lawrence and Janice Sheps applied for site development plan approval to build a deck on the west side of an existing garage on the property at Three Dows Lane, which is located in the View Preservation District, whereas the proposed improvements require variances for coverage, and this was front yard, right, front yard setback, which were granted by the zoning board of appeals on May 26th. And Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in memorandum dated March 1st and May 4th listed a number of issues which were all addressed in subsequent submissions, whereas the recommendations of the village's landscape consultant were complied with, and whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on May 4th and June 3rd, 2020, and whereas the proposed deck would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties, whereas the actions are type-two action under SECRE, and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Sheps Residence Garage Modifications." I designate the sheet numbers prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture, last dated May 20th, 2020.
Okay, Caesar Manfredi votes yes, and designating Sarah. Sheila?
Yes, and designate.
Dan, you're recused. George Boyle?
Yes, and designating Sarah to signature.
Kevin Thurman?
Yes, designating Sarah.
Okay, I guess we're done with that one.
John, I'll send you our memo. You should have got it, but we'll send it over.
Thank you.
All right, number two, 202008. This is 255 South Buckout Street. I am recused on that. I designate George Boyle as chairman for this application.
Okay, so Sarah, please open it up to the applicant.
Sure. Just reminding who's here to represent the applicant. Should hit the raise hand button, please.
You're both on mute.
On mute? Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, great. You want me to just recap, sorry, my name is Adama Mayarano, representing the applicant Yifte Frechter from Community Designs and Engineering. Do you want me to just recap the project from where we left off?
No, I'd say that the best thing for you to do is to show how you have responded to the comments that were made at the last meeting.
Yeah, so basically, we did receive our comments from Han's engineering on our last meeting. We did, all of the comments that we responded to are bubbled on our drawings. It's hard to sort of go through every.
Well, specifically, there were specific questions that were raised by the board, especially about your landscaping and how you were going to block or blur the new addition.
Exactly, so the main concern, yes, about the landscaping in front of the garage that exists today that we're proposing a one-story addition above. We did some site analysis, so that there is about a three-foot buffer from the mature flowering bushes in front of the garage to the actual garage stone veneer. Most of the addition will take place above the canopy of those trees. We did note out on the drawing on SB1 that if any trees or flowering bushes, say, are affected during construction, they should be replaced in size and similar species of plant or approved equal during construction. They will, you know, I guess, trim as needed the bushes against the house, that, you know, some of the branches that are touching it. But again, like I said, most of it, there is a buffer from the garage to the flowering bushes in the front, and then most of the work will be above that canopy of those trees to create that, you know, keep that vegetation there, so it blocks the view of the, you know, predominant structure along the front elevation of it.
So you're saying that you're, on your drawings, I didn't miss that, that on your drawings, it shows that those are to remain?
Yes, to remain.
And if they get destroyed, that you will replace in kind?
Exactly, yeah. It's right on SB1 on the site plan, like right below those bushes.
George, I also had that written into the resolution as a condition.
Okay, great. So does anyone else from the, anyone else from the community have any questions about this? Going once?
This is Caesar Manfredi, this is Caesar Manfredi, I'm a citizen. Replace in kind, there's no indication how tall the existing shrubs is, so it may be vague as to how to replace in kind when we don't know the current height of the vegetation in front. Maybe there can be a notation?
Sure, we could certainly provide, you know, overall what the height size of those trees are and whatnot.
We also have existing photos that will show the height relative to the existing house.
Exactly.
Okay. Fine, no more.
Does anyone else have any, anyone from the public have any other questions? Does anyone from the board have any questions regarding this application? Okay, so with that, I guess we need a resolution. Mary Ann, do we have one?
Yeah, I prepared one. In February 2020, Yifte Frechter applied for site development plan approval to build in addition and related improvements to his house at 255 South Buckout, which is located in the View Preservation District, and whereas the improvements require variances for coverage in FAR, which were granted by the zoning board of appeals on April 21st, 2020, whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated March 3rd, 2019, listed a number of items, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission, whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on March 4th and June 3rd, 2020, and whereas the comments of the village's landscape consultant were addressed to her satisfaction, and whereas the proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties, the actions are type-two action under SECRE, and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Proposed Addition and Interior/ Exterior Alterations." The designated sheets prepared by Community Designs Engineering, all last dated 4/23, subject to one, complying with the items in the Han memorandum dated June 1st, 2020, and two, retaining the existing mature foundation plantings in front of the house, and if damaged during construction, replacing them with similar plantings of the same height.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, I guess. Sheila, do you, are you interested in voting on this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and how do you vote?
Sheila, you just froze, you screened.
Well, to the next one. Sheila, can you hear us?
In and out.
Okay, so Sheila, if you can hear us, raise your hand to say yes, you vote in positive, and you want Sarah to sign for you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
I'm in favor of the said resolutions, one and two.
And do you allow Sarah to sign for you?
Designate Sarah to sign the resolution.
Thank you, and Kevin?
I vote yes and authorize Sarah.
Okay, I vote yes and authorize Sarah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know what?
Oh.
Just one second. And how will they get their resolutions? Are you going to mail it, or should they come to Village Hall?
We'll email it as part of the, we'll email it.
Okay.
Okay, George, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
We're going on to the next one here. You're welcome. The next one here is number four on the agenda, Maravira Corporation, Castle Road. It's 202013. Do we have a presenter?
Caesar, I thought we were going to do 47 Main Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, I flipped, you're correct.
All right.
Number three, we're doing number three. Vincent Limited Partnership, 47 Main, that's 201926. Do we have a presenter?
Hold on one second. Yes, we do.
Hello, good evening, Sammy Salem with Ken Properties.
Okay, you're on, we see you.
John Sullivan from Engle Laskin Associates, where the consulting for the applicants.
Okay, you want to bring us up to date on any revisions since the last meeting? There were certain things you needed to do with the screening.
Can I share my screen?
Screening and some fencing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just asking if I could share my screen.
Are you able to?
Yeah, it's disabled.
Okay, hold on one second. You should be able to share your screen now.
So we submitted, and a few weeks ago, we made some changes to the landscaping as per the comments. The legend represents some of the. On the north edge of the property.
Your voice is going in and out.
In and out.
You hear me, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so we resubmitted the site plan, we revised the landscaping as per.
For the moment.
Hello?
Yeah, we got you.
We also. Okay. The refusing closures on the two concrete pads that last time the site plan did not indicate. We're working through some of the engineering and drainage. The principal of the firm, Mike Gillespie, is completing that, so that was the majority of the comments. And there wasn't, some talk last time about the fence along the north edge of the property. It should, you know, be known that probably about 40% of that fence is on the applicant's property, and they would like to, you know, retain that fence. It seems kind of frivolous to remove it and, you know, locate it a few inches, you know, onto property where it's.
Okay, and you put some foliage in front of the fence. Now, I, does anybody on the board have any comment regarding them putting up a fence and taking down the existing fence?
Caesar, this is Sammy from Ken. I think that's what the board wanted us to do last meeting, is take down.
Yeah, I know, I'm asking, I'm asking if it's okay to leave it there.
Oh, thank you.
I would say yes, because if you're talking about that it's encroaching by a few inches, and the neighbor next door is okay with it, it seems a waste of money, but that's my.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, you put some foliage in front of the existing fence.
Yes, we did. And those.
Yeah, okay. George, can I get, can I find out for the rest of the board about the fence? Sheila, you have any problem with using the existing fence? I'm having trouble with the audio. Kevin, you have any problem with the existing fence?
No, I don't.
Dan?
No, I don't either.
Right, and I don't either, okay. And did you put a railing around the stairwells or pits? There's two of them in the back there.
We were going to modify the existing railing where the stair goes to the basement of 47 Main, and bring it up to code with, you know, some steel spindles that, you know, have a maximum of four-inch spacing.
All right, and that can be settled with engineering as this goes along. And you did put the details on the fence around the rubbish container. Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns with this application? George?
Nope.
Kevin?
No, don't.
Dan?
None.
Sheila, are you back with audio?
In and out, but I heard, I heard, I heard everything. It was fine.
Okay.
Nope.
Mary Ann, we have, any comment from the public? Public going once? Twice? Sarah, anything? No. All right. Mary Ann, do we have a resolution for this?
Yeah, I do. Whereas in December 2019, Vincent Limited Partnership applied for site development plan approval to construct four parking spaces in a refugee area at the rear of their property of 47 Main Street, which is located in the View Preservation District, and whereas a portion of the parking area lies on the lot to the east, and whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in memorandum dated December 3rd and March 31st, 2020, listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in subsequent issues. And whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on December 4th, 2019, May 6th, and June 3rd, 2020, and whereas the proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawing entitled "Amended Site Plan with Proposed Parking, 47 Main Street", prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates, last dated 5/2020, subject to one, complying with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated June 1st, 2020, complying with the recommendations in the Nolan Landscape Architects Review dated June 1st, 2020, and providing proof of filing of an easement over the neighboring property.
Okay, one last thought. I know you didn't, doesn't appear you proposed any new lighting, but keep in mind, if you, at some time in the future, you put some lighting in, it has to be dark sky compliant. Okay, we're ready for a vote. Sheila, apply. Sheila, just raise your hand if you can't speak. If you say yes and designate Sarah.
Yes.
Okay. Dan, McGellicut?
I approve.
What about Sarah?
Sarah, sign.
Sign for me.
Caesar Manfredi is yes, and designate Sarah to sign. George Boyle?
Yes, and designate Sarah, please.
Kevin Thurman?
Yes, and designate Sarah.
Okay.
Just, Sarah, Sarah, I just want to say on this one, I'm going to have to send you an amended resolution because I just noticed when he was screen sharing that the title of that plan is different than the original title of the plan. So I'll send you a new one right after the meeting, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, we're done with that one.
Thank you very much.
We will, you're welcome. Now we'll do number four, which I mistakenly said before. That's 202013, Maravira Castle Road. Do we have a presenter for Castle Road?
No, Caesar, I'm having a lot of trouble with this.
If you can hear us, your audio just cut out.
Mary Ann, you're saying.
Okay, Jim and Mark, you're both on, you're both.
This is Mark, can you hear me?
Yep, now, yep.
Okay, I guess Jim just had to unmute.
Hi, this is Jim, Anna Carrico, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Jim, can you put your screen up, please? Can you share or no?
I can't share, no, unfortunately.
All right. Hold on a second. Sarah, can you do that?
Just to, just so everybody has this in a context, the only thing you'll be doing on this application tonight is determining the site capacity, how many lots they can divide it into. That's all tonight. No, they haven't yet done the subdivision application nor the site plan application. So tonight is just the board making the site capacity determination.
Okay, that's fine.
So Sarah's going to put up the plan, because I think everyone needs to see it. But, Mary Ann, do you want to just give a run-through for everyone while we're here?
Yeah, just quickly, this was, this was, this was a lot that was part of the, the big, what was it? What was the subdivision called, Mark?
I think it was Halsey Lake Estates, I believe.
Okay, and it was, it was a big subdivision that had like, I think, 27 single-family houses, and then one lot that was left, this lot, which is a little more than four acres, I think. And.
Right.
They, at the, back, I think it was in 1979, they got approval to build 14 townhouses there. And then when they came back like 30 years later, you know, to build the townhouses, the village said, hey, listen, you know, a lot of laws have changed. Now you can't have a 30-year-old. the, the village said, hey, listen, you know, a lot of laws have changed. Now you can't have a thirty-year-old approval. You have to go through the process again. And it went, it went through several levels of court and the villagers' position, um, village was successful in its position. So, so, um, uh, they've just come back. They came back at some point, I think, um, uh, like right after that. I think it was in, in twenty twelve for a four-lot subdivision. Um, I mean, I, no, not a subdivision, for a, a site capacity of four. Um, and at the time, it was, they didn't quite meet the numbers for site capacity for four. It could have been three, and that's what they've come back, um, with now. It's, uh, it would be, uh, site capacity of three. They, they, they drew it out so you could see what it would look like, but this is not necessarily how it would be, how it would be subdivided. But it means that they could build, um, and I'll go through the calculation. I've done the calculation for the site capacity determination. But they're entitled on this parcel, which is a hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred and sixty square feet, to build, um, uh, to get three lots out of it. Is that, Ed, does that... And again, you, you know, the, the subdivision is not, not part of their application and, um, uh, they'll, they'll have to come back for that.
So are you saying that basically we're just looking at this to decide that there can be three potential sites on this, this, that's it?
Yes.
The original subdivision, if anyone's interested.
And the, at a later date, uh, how those are demarked will be done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's also, I mean, I don't think it would happen in this case, but it is conceivable that you can come up with a site capacity, let's say of three, but for maybe setback reasons or frontage reasons, they, they can't come, um, come up with three conforming lots, but it sets the maximum. I mean, again, just from their preliminary, it doesn't seem like there's an issue, but, but it sees, based on the determination that's set forth in our code, the maximum number of lots they can build is three. They can develop.
That is, is that, is that based on, uh, zoning, or what, what's that, when you say, based on our code?
Yeah, the, where the Resource Protection Section of the code, um, has a formula for, um, uh, for, for site, for site capacity. Do, do you want me to go through it now? Or did you want to let, uh?
Did it wrong?
I think it would explain everything.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Um, actually, it's pretty much, um, the resolution. Um, so you know what? Why don't I go through the resolution? Then if the applicant or somebody had, you have questions, but, or if not, then you can vote on it. In May twenty twenty, Marvera Corporation applied for a site capacity. Four-point-four-two acre lot it owns on Castle Road, and with, right now it doesn't have an address, just a tax parcel number. This, okay, Han Engineering, the Village Attorney, review the submission and confirm the following calculation pursuant to section two twenty-four eighty-two of this zoning code. Are you guys getting this echo?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think it's for me. Okay. Um, gross site area, a hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred and sixty square feet. Then there's certain subtractions you have to make. There's only one subtraction all of it's work. And that's for any land that, um, that's an easement access. Did you go back to the, the drawing that shows where your driveway is? Is, is it... Who's pulling them up?
Sarah's gonna be handling it. Just tell her to scroll up, scroll up, scroll up a little more.
The one, the blue one?
One.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. So if, if I look on the lot furthest to the right, at the beginning of the driveway, there's this stub that's white. That's part of the driveway for the lot next door. Part of the driveway to be an easement, um, um, their property owner to use that. So that'll be the easement access, and that constitutes two thousand three hundred and fifty-five square feet. Constitutes two thousand... Wait, that's mine, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, but it just, I mean, it, it wasn't happening before.
Yeah, I don't know why that's happening. Um, okay, so then you subtract that and you have a base site area of a hundred ninety thousand two hundred and ninety-five square feet. Then from the base site area, you have to subtract any resource area you have there. The only resource protection features on these lots are steep slopes. There's some fifteen to twenty-five percent, um, and some two to twenty-five percent. So, fifteen to twenty-five percent, you have to subtract fifty percent of the square footage of those. Okay, see, there's a note from, you see, there's a note from, here's a note from everybody else. Everybody else. Everybody else.
Can, can all the panelists not talk and put it on mute for a second? Let's see if, uh, Mary Ann's... Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Joan. Thank you.
Jim, you're not muting. Sheila, you're not muting.
Okay, hang on. Sorry.
Sorry, hang on. Sorry, hang on.
Okay. I think it was Jim, I think it was you, Jim. Um, okay, then, okay, so we got to a base side area of a hundred ninety thousand two hundred ninety-five square feet. We subtract fifty percent of the steep slopes. There's about thirty-four thousand in steep, in, in moderately steep slopes. So you subtract close to seventeen thousand. And then the, the slopes greater than twenty-five percent, you subtract seventy-five percent of those, which is thirty-one thousand. You subtract those two numbers and you have a net buildable site area of a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty, so just about a hundred and forty-two thousand. Then you take that number and you divide it by what's the density factor. And the density factor is, what's the minimum lot size in that district? So the density factor for this district is forty thousand. You divide one forty-one seven eighty by forty thousand and you come to three point five. And under the code, you have to round down. So even if you were three point nine, you have to round down to three. That's the zone. So anyway, so it, you end up with three point five rounded down to three, and that would mean that the planning board determines that the site capacity of this lot is three. Okay? Any questions? You'll have to unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, any, any questions from anybody else on the board?
No.
Any comment from the public?
I don't know whether Jim Anna Carrico and Mark had anything to add to that.
Not really. That was pretty good, Mary Ann.
Oh, thanks, Jim.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you know, pretty much just math.
Yep.
And we've shown it's, you know, like you said, three point five. Uh, and, uh, we will be, you know, as part of the application, eventually we'll be, uh, at the next meeting, hopefully, we'll be coming in front of the subdivision of three lots.
And just by the way, the, the, so you know, this, this plan does show, um, utility easements on it, utilities on it. That's because they're there now, because those utilities that serve the, the, the twenty, was twenty-seven houses in the beginning, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Mary Ann, it was, it was twenty-seven, uh, lots and houses, uh, plus the, what was originally contemplated.
Plus this lot, yeah.
Right.
Caesar, we have one, uh, we have at least one hand up when you're ready.
Okay, uh, if we have any, well, let's do the board first. Any comment from the board? Nope, no comment from the board. We have comment from the public?
Yeah, um, Sarah, can you open up one at a time, please?
Wesley Altman, if you're on, you, you muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Greta, do you want to talk, or you just want to use the, um, the chat, the web of our chat? Well, all right, so we have, we have a chat from Greta Patel. We live at Seven Palace Road and as the intent, and it, as the intent of three lots would be developed three houses, we have serious concerns about how any development on the site would impact drainage, which is already poor.
Okay.
Um, would you like me to answer that, Caesar?
Well, wouldn't that be something, um, down the road? I mean, I, I don't think that's part of what we're looking at right now.
And you're correct, Caesar. This would be part of the subdivision. Um, and, and it would be taken seriously, and the village engineer and the applicant's engineer will spend a lot of time on it. Uh, but it's not for this meeting. This is clearly an administrative, uh, meeting. You have any other questions?
And I would rec, I, I would recommend to the, to the, uh, to the, the public person, uh, to keep track of this when, when it comes up for, uh, for further approvals, which is necessary, which will include all those engineering things. There, there's always a stormwater, uh, a drainage plan, there's, there's erosion control plans. And the entire board is well aware that Halsey Pond is, is just down the slope from here. Um, so I think those things will come up, uh, at a later, uh, submittal and later approvals, both engineering and by the planning board.
Right, one of the comment in Doug Han's, uh, memo was, you know, that we, he would, he would like some preliminary soil result, uh, testing done. Um, so we'll obviously do that, hopefully before the next meeting. Um, but you know, the, well, the land does slope from Castle Road down to, to Halsey Lake, Halsey Pond. So, I don't believe, you know, there's any serious impact to any of the, uh, neighboring properties. But we will have to show, you know, that we're not, um, increasing the, uh, the runoff from this, each site.
Caesar, we also have Wesley Altman who would like to speak. Wesley, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? All right. Perfect. So I, I'm new to the neighborhood and it sounds like there's clearly a lot of history here, and I'm just speaking as, as a citizen in the area. Uh, I just wanted to comment that, you know, if you look at where this parcel sits relative to the pond, you know, clearly this development would have a, a material impact on the beauty and value of the park to the community. And to the extent that there's an option that preserves that value while recognizing that municipal resources are limited and it is the developer's private property, uh, I just wanted to say that I think that's very much worth exploring, as there may potentially be a solution that's a, a win-win for everyone here.
What are you suggesting? That the village buy it? I, I think that's what you were suggesting.
Uh, that's what, I, again, and I apologize because I'm, I'm new to this process and I need to do my homework more on, and hopefully they'll have some, you know, you tell me, but maybe I can speak at some later meetings here, but, um, whether it's, you know, the land trust options or, um, other options in Westchester, um, you know, my familiarity comes from other jurisdictions, so that's just something I need to get up to speed on, but...
Well, I, I, there's no question that Halsey Pond is a great concern, and, and these, the details of which, uh, will, will come up, your concerns will come up. And if there are alternatives, um, you're, you're welcome to explore them and, uh, and, uh, but tonight, for tonight, it's just a preliminary. Ed, will you describe once again the, the exact...
It's an administrative, it's an administrative act based on, um, attributes, uh, that were discussed, um, earlier.
Yeah, it's just...
There's not, there's not, there's no ability to carve, cut, redesign, relocate at this time, but there's gonna be plenty of time for that conversation in their next submission.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yes, Caesar, we have Kathy, um...
Devens.
Devens, thank you, Kathy.
Hi, yes, we, we have the, the neighboring property. And my concern was, um, for the drainage issues, which have been, um, great at the, at the sunset circle at the bottom, to have more, um, flooding down there. The, the, the development that was done before caused, caused a lot of the houses to, to flood at the bottom, like the Patel's house. Um, the other, um, concern I have is, is that house, the most east, eastward house. Looks like the driveway runs parallel to the path to the lake, which seems to, it would really ruin the aesthetic of the, uh, of that path to, the beautiful path down to the lake that the village owns, to have a driveway that close to it. Hello?
No.
I don't know if that works.
Was that it, Kathy?
Yeah, I was just concerned with, especially the location of the house to the east.
We got it. And that's the, that's the design stuff I mentioned in my last presentation. That'll, that'll all be taken up in the, their next submission. Um, if you have any real concerns, and, and every, anybody listening, it'd be, especially in the environment of the, uh, online, please email comments to Sarah, her web, her emails on our website, and she'll get, she'll distribute it to all the board members, so that, um, it can be a productive meeting next time.
Okay.
We'll get them to the applicants, so that, um, everything will be seen and heard. But understand, it, it, the drainage we take, we can regulate is only the drainage on the property affected at this time. So we have, can't, can't fix the road. We can't make them fix the road. We can't make them do improvements to the road, but we can make sure that they don't do any adverse condition to the road from the properties they're developing.
Right. What about the aesthetics to the, to the, to the...
That will be taken into consideration as well, and at, at a later date.
Okay. What, what, is that the next meeting then, when that comes up?
It's, it's, it's a subsequent meeting, um, after they make a submission.
I see. So do we get notified again when the next, when this is on the agenda again?
Um, you'll have to keep an eye on the agenda. Uh, they only notice, uh, the one time or subsequent, if it's become the long, drawn-out process, we're not sure about that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I saw...
Ed, Ed, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, because I got my audio, I got knocked off the telephone. All right. And, and for some reason I got knocked off the visual, so...
Yeah, I did too. Something happened. I got knocked off.
Something happened.
Yeah.
All right, um, are we done with, any more comment from, uh?
That's it, we have one email. Yeah, we have one email from Jen Blair, and Jen, it's, it's up to the applicant to make their next submission. It sounds like they want to, if that helps you. And that's it.
Okay. Uh, I, I, I think the, the comments that I've heard are applicable to uh, the next round of application when they come in with more specifics. I, I, I think that those comments are early to this app, to this current, uh, review. Um, so I, I think we can move forward. Any, any, uh...
Caesar, can I ask you just one question? Yeah. Do, do, are you guys intending, when you come back with the subdivision, to also have, um, do site plan or just subdivide and then sell off the lots? I'm just curious. Or have you thought about it? Yep.
You're asking, okay, you're asking, oh, sorry.
Yeah, just curious.
Is Mark unmuted? I'd, I'd rather Mark answer that question.
I, I just unmuted. So forgive me for not knowing the exact steps, uh, and, and the names of each, but, Jim, we're, we're ultimately gonna look for the, the, the capacity and the, and the limited site plan approval.
Right.
That's what we had, all right. So if you, if you could explain those three, right? It's, it's the calc of the density.
Tonight, night, you know, we're hoping they vote yes to the site capacity of three. Um, at, you know, with the initial submission we've made, you know, it did, it did include some information about subdivision and, uh, a sheet also for limited site, uh, development plan approval, uh, which will come later. Um, so I, I think I've explained to Mark, um, before that, uh, if limited site wants subdivision and limited site development plan approval are issued, anybody who would want to develop these lots, whether it be Mark or whether they sold it off to a developer, um, or individuals who, uh, you know, who wanted to, uh, build a house, they would have to come back to the board for a site development plan.
Okay, okay. I was just cur, I was just curious. I mean, I don't care who's developing, I just wanted to know what...
I, I don't...
Yeah, because it just makes it a little easier to consider the subdivision if you've got some... Yeah, because it just makes it a little easier to consider the subdivision if you've got some, some, at least some limited site plan, you plan approval. Do you know what I mean?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what we're go, we're intending, Jim, correct?
Yeah.
That's what we, alright.
Yeah, we, we will be asking for a limited site development plan approval for each, you know, for the three lots.
Okay, having heard some of the comments from the public, does, does anybody on the board have any further comments on this? George? Dan?
Just a quick, with the 3.0, that means you could build up to 27 homes on the site?
No, no, you can build up to three homes, Dan.
Oh, great. Okay, I got it.
The 27 were what was in the 1979 approval.
So it's up to three homes. Okay, I got you. Very good.
Okay. Alright, you have a resolution, Mary Ann?
Yeah, um, okay, one for everybody with all the numbers again, those who are in the, well, okay. Whereas in May 2020, Marvera Corporation applied for a site capacity determination of the 4.42 acre lot at Onzon Castle Road, Tax Parcel 2140-6821. And whereas Han Engineering, the village attorney, reviewed the submission and confirmed the following calculation, which I went through before. And I'm not going to go through all of it, resulting in a net buildable site area of 141,780 square feet. Whereas the Marvera lot is located in the 140 zoning district for which the density factor is 40,000 and 141,780 divided by 40,000 results in a site capacity of 3.5, which under section 224-84 of the zoning code is rounded down to three. Now therefore, be it resolved, the planning board determines that the site capacity of lot 2.140-88-21 is three. That's it.
Okay. Wait, we, I will canvas for a vote. She'll have the time.
Yes, it asks Sarah to sign, please.
Dan, we got it, bud?
Give verbal authorization to Sarah to sign.
Caesar Manfredi votes yes and defer to Sarah to sign for me. George Boyle? George?
George, you're unmute. George, you're muted.
Yes, and please have Sarah vote for me, sign for me.
Kevin Thurman?
I vote yes and authorize Sarah to sign on my behalf.
Okay. Okay, that's it for that one.
Thank you very much.
Oh. I miraculously got my, my video back. I had lost it. Okay. Moving along to item number five on the hit parade. That's 202012 7-9 South Cottonwood Street. Is Garrett presenting? Sorry, I think the same guy's running. Isn't John Nolan the presenter on this?
Yeah, John's on. John, me, John, me. Okay.
Hello, guys. Tom Malone, first in architecture, representing the Nemchek Residence Project. At our last last meeting, we received comments and addressed, addressed the comments. The first one, just quickly to go through, there was an FAR calculation comment about whether the basement, we didn't speak about this at last meeting, but just quickly to refer to that, whether the basement should be counted because it's located on the front yard. We had measurements on the site that showed that the basement wouldn't need to be counted. The survey indicates that it would. It's, you know, it's like a 36 inches and the survey showed it at 38 inches to the floor. So we have updated the FAR to match the survey. The project that we're proposing, the FAR is actually reduced from what the current FAR is. So that's been revised. The next item was the.
Before we leave that, John, before we leave that, Ed and Doug, you okay with the far?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Yeah, the next thing was the need for the architectural review board to approve the demolition of the portion of the building that we are demolishing. Just quickly, so this board knows, we're proposing demolishing the 1950s addition to the building and maintaining the older portion of the building. The historic district indicated that the older portion of the building was, you know, it indicated the whole building was 1950, but we think the older portion of the building might be as old as 1860. It's quite old building. So we're, we're basically saving what we think is the historically valuable part, removing the portion of the building that was added on the 50s in a sort of a insensitive way and replacing it with more sensitive addition. But we need to be referred to the ARB in order to approve that demolition.
John, while you're on, while you're on demolition, you didn't, you didn't mention the garage being, the current garage is being demolished.
Right, right. The garage, the garage, we're also showing the garage being demolished and a new garage being built. So that, that would be within the ARB's purview to say it's okay that that garage can be removed. The garage is not, I don't believe is either 1950s or 1868 because there wasn't a lot of cars. It, it's old though. I mean, I think it's in the category probably 1920s. We're just thinking that it's not an important piece in terms of what's contributing to the original layout of the village. I don't know if there's any other questions on that piece. Other, the third item was, I think what we spent the most time on the last meeting was the garage location that we had shown had visual impacts along Main Street and potentially visual impacts on the river along Main Street as you look down Main Street. We have relocated that garage, moving it back to, I think, close to where we had originally indicated the garage in our initial submission. And the same time, we've changed the design of the garage to reduce the overall height of the garage to try to limit any impacts from the views of the adjacent building. And we've moved it away from the adjacent building, providing a four foot buffer so that a vegetative screen can be placed between the new garage and the adjacent building to the east. We reviewed that screening strategy with Suzanne Nolan to make sure that, you know, there's an existing hedge there now. So to make sure that there's room for the plants that we're indicating and those plants will thrive. That's what we, you know, we reviewed with her and she's, she's okay with that approach. It's basically extending, in the earlier applications, we had a skip loyal hedge that we were bringing along the north edge of the property and we're extending that between the garage. We made enough room to extend that between the garage and the existing hedge. So that, that was the third item we addressed. We revised the visual impact analysis to show the garage in the new location and you can see the improvement in the visual impact analysis. Item four was related to the civil engineering from Hudson about excessive pipe bends that were shown in the stormwater, the stormwater approach. The next item was the stormwater narrative. And that's been revised and resubmitted. The trevery breakdown was adjusted. And I think there's, item six from our last month's request had to do with clarifying the, the difference between the two phases and where the limit of the phase is. I think there's a note in the most recent review from Doug that asked for more clarification on it. It's basically, he wants us to indicate where exactly in the stub, and I can share a screen to show you where, you know, where phase one starts and where phase two starts, like what portion will be. It's indicated in the architecturals, but not indicated in the civil. So we will have Hudson add that. There was a question about the floor plan orientation relative to the survey and we've added North Arrows to more clearly indicate that. And then the last piece was Suzanne Nolan's comments about both planting, fencing, and the largest of those, I think, was the tree, the existing street trees on the west side of the property. There's two street trees on Cottonet that are overhanging the roof of the existing house. So we had, as of last meeting, if you guys remember, we had our arborist make recommendations. They recommended that the trees be removed. We've since gone to the, the tree commission on that. The tree commission does not want the trees removed. The owner, our owner doesn't want the trees removed and.
That's not true, John. The memo we have from the tree commission at the bottom recommended removal and replacement.
They, in additional, we had additional conversations with the tree commission.
We don't have that in writing anywhere, John.
Okay, so that's.
What we have in writing, John, is they, at the end of their letter, they said they wanted the tree removed.
So, so to clarify that, in the letter that, from the tree commission, they had interpreted the required, the required trimming and our.
I'd rather we not, um, I'd rather the tree committee speak for themselves, John.
Okay.
And, and, and I have to add that the Davy Tree Arborist, this letter to you dated April 13th, recommended the trees to come down and actually said in item number four in their letter, I do not believe pruning is a viable option.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and, and this guy signed as Patrick Layman is an arborist. Is anybody on the tree commission an arborist to contradict the arborist who wrote this letter?
Uh, I, you know, this is, this is, you guys asked us to deal to, to review it directly with the tree commission. So that's what we did. We reviewed it with the tree commission chair. We have sent them emails.
I didn't have a, I didn't have a copy of, I didn't have a copy of this Davy Tree letter at the time.
That was submitted in the last, that was submitted in our, our submission last time, Caesar. That was included.
Unfortunately, with this electronic business, it's hard to find things, but I did find it this time.
Right, right. So, you know, that was, that was what you were, we were asked to get that recommendation. We got that recommendation. Just to keep people up to date, we have since reviewed that with the, with the tree commission chair. He, the way he left it with us is he was going to remove, review the, the tree commission's wishes with Greg Nielsen and get back to us on that. And we haven't heard back, but he promised to do that. The, the, what was told to us and, you know, they may change their minds that they would rather keep the trees up. And we agreed to the, whatever limited pruning we can do to get it off the roof would be sufficient for that. So. So that's up to them to get back to us.
As Ed said, we need, we, we need documentation. And I would also, you know, like further, you know, a second opinion. I mean, we've had chief done on the property here, we're, I'm the president. And we had one arborist come in and say something has, is, has to come down and then we get a second opinion. He says, no, it can be saved. So, you know, if you can get an up, if you can get an arborist who, who says differently than this arborist that the trees can be pruned successfully, that, that would be helpful in addition to the recommendations from the tree commission in writing.
Okay, so, well, I think, do you want us to pursue the tree commission? I think that's what you said directly. We can continue to pursue the tree commission to make sure they give us something in writing that can be submitted to the planning board. My understanding was they were taking it from here and they were going to, I mean, I can continue to pursue them. I'm not sure what the right course of action is there, so.
In addition to, as I said, in addition to pursuing the tree commission's recommendations in writing, I think you need a second opinion from an arborist about whether pruning, according to this arborist, I do not believe pruning is a viable option. So you need an obvious second opinion on that. I mean, you know, everybody has a different opinion.
The arborist that we worked with, Patrick Layman, that's there is also the arborist for the village. And I think Patrick Layman and the tree commission chair and Greg Nielsen were going to review that themselves. I think the extent of the pruning that Patrick may have assumed was to the property line. And what we talked to the chair about is we don't need it pruned to the property line. We just need it pruned away from the building so that the building can be painted and maintained.
All right, well then, there needs to be some combined recommendation, including.
You need some, right, you need some response from him, right.
Right. And, and if, if Patrick is okay with the limited pruning that you, that, which is different than what he might have misunderstood initially, as you said.
Right.
Then he needs to say that.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll, I, I will, I'll pursue, you know, what Greg Nielsen, the tree commission and Patrick can see if I can get that letter to. The other issues on Suzanne's list was a misdesignation that we had. We used the same language for two plants. The plants have changed and then a, a comment about the fence. So as part of the relocation of the garage, we've reduced the heights of the fence in general. And we're showing lower fencing in that area. We think it's just a, there, there's basically a, the position of the pergola provides privacy with planting. And so the fences, we're showing them lower just to not have it be a wall. And that's the, that's the changes that we made. I don't know if there's any piece, if you want me to share a screen and go into any piece specifically, but.
Could you, could you bring up a, a, the plan, site plan that shows the new location of the garage? Because there, there's an issue with the new paving plan with the new location.
Let me. Are you guys seeing the screen okay?
Yes.
I, 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 I see what you, I don't see what I want to see, but I do.
No, no, you're seeing, you're seeing the draw, you're seeing the drawing set.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
You're getting there.
So this is the, we'll be looking at, in order to see the garage, we'll be looking at the phase two portion of the, phase two portion of it. If you guys can see that.
Okay.
Is that good enough?
Now, if I, if we read this correctly, you're going, there's along the hedge line on the north end of the property, parallel to the curb of Main Street, there's a grassy area there now that you're planning to pave, pave that, increase the paved area there?
In this area here, yes. This is shown as paved and it's grass now.
Right. Uh, I have a problem with that. That, that becomes a parking lot. A parking lot right on the property line.
Okay, well, Caesar, this, if we look at the existing condition over here on the left, right, you know, this is, this is the amount of the paved area that we're showing now. So.
Correct.
This area here that's being paved is now being replaced with a planted area here. So, and it's also being reduced in depth of the, you know, it's, it's really a trade for, you know, a much more developed planted area. You know, it's basically moving pavement from this area, you know, from this area here to this area. And then in addition to that, it's reducing, removing all of this pavement that we're back here. So it's a significant reduction in paved area. And in the, in the area up near the street, it is, you know, like a, an improvement of planting, but also the, the little bit of grass area there that's there now is being replaced by a, you know, a much more elaborate planting area. That is, you know, you actually have view from the street right at that planting area through the opening, through the hedge, as opposed to right now from this sidewalk condition, you're looking through the opening to paved area and cars. And what you'll be looking at now is a series of planted hedges and, you know, a much better condition, a reduced pavement area.
I, I, unfortunately, I don't, I don't understand that. Some, some, the drawing on the right, the paving is going right up to the existing hedge line. Is that not right?
Yeah, it is. But in it, but it, but what I'm saying is this area here, and hold on one second. You'll allow me to.
So when you're walking down the street, you, you, there's going to be cars parked there.
Well, the car parking area is in the garage, right? You know, so right now, what, what you have on this area is you have, you know, pavement in this area here, right?
I'm not sure. Okay.
Right? So that, that's.
You got that, that red line. How far, how far north is that, the north red line going to extend?
So, so the paid, the paid area here is, is this area here. Right?
Yeah. Now, where, where is the new paved area? Do it in different colors if you can. Yeah, it's right, right up against.
That's what I'm, that, that's what I'm showing. So, so what you could say is that, is, um, what you're saying is this area here is now being paved, right?
I'm not that concerned with the amount, John, you're missing the point. If, if you're explaining that, gee, it's, it's a wash on the amount of pavement, it's where the pavement is, that, that area by the, by the hedge is going to become a parking lot. So, you're walking down the street, you're going to be looking at cars parked there.
Well, I, I mean, I think visually now, Caesar, when you're walking down the street here now, if this is your eye, right? You're looking through an opening between two tall hedges, and what you're seeing is this and this. And right now, you have exterior cars parked in here, right? And your whole view is pavement. You're not seeing this grass area, uh, as much as you were seeing pavement. In our approach here, what we're proposing to do is, you know, put the, the viewer is now looking at, uh, this planted area here, and the part behind the hedge is paved, but this becomes a planted area, right? So that you will be using, I, 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 I think what we're proposing is an improvement. If you want us to look at some other kind of pavement that would be more pleasing, one of the things we could do is we could upgrade.
John, it's not the pavement. It's the fact you're going to be parking cars on it. I mean, if you pulled it back more. Let me, let me canvass the board and see if, John, hold on a second. Let me canv, let me canvas the board and see if I'm the only one with a concern. Sheila, a time?
I agree with you, Caesar. Uh, after looking at this, uh, site, uh, the cars really hit you, and that's right now. You can see, that's, it, it, the landscaping takes second place as far as your vision goes. And to add more, uh, in there, I, I just don't, it's very distasteful.
Dan?
I, I.
Can I go?
Plantings, but I, I don't like, again, it seems like the parking area sort of dominates the, that area.
George?
Well, I'm going to start by saying that, you know, I think, uh, John has done a terrific job, uh, with a new location of the garage, and.
I agree.
Married it into, uh, he understood the concerns, uh, that, that everyone had because there was a garage that was basically, as you're walking down Main Street, that's what you're going to hit. Uh, I, I guess, I guess the, the thing, John, that, that everyone's commenting about, and I, I did as well, was that, really, this is meant to be a, uh, an area where you can get out of your garage, so you can get out of, out onto the street. And right now, there, there isn't the need necessarily for that width. And it sure would be beneficial, again, for the village, as you're walking down there, that, you know, as you try to explain in your, your diagram, that's all fine and dandy unless there's a car there. And more than likely, there will always be a car there, uh, because of the width that's, that you've provided. So, I think if you just made the, the turnaround area, uh, narrower, and you gave that benefit, to the street, uh, it would be a, a win-win for, I, I would assume, you still get what you want in terms of, uh, now, I would even go, we're not talking about that much. We're just trying to make it so that if you keep the existing curb that you have right now, that arcs, okay, off the garage.
Right, keep this one.
Keep that one, and just make the, the apron that you have for the turnaround smaller so that it's sufficient for a car. There you go, okay?
Yeah, let me do it, let me do something clear since.
That's a, that to me is a, is a more, uh, kind of meeting in the middle grounds for, for something like this, uh, that I think would be more, uh, appropriate for the village, because, yeah, the, no one really does want to see just a driveway and cars. That, that would be not as appropriate as, so that, now, thinking about it, this, for even for your client, is now that that can become part of this landscape, and we should keep even more, and it'll be sort of like a borrowed scenery for them. Uh, and the village would, would benefit from it as well.
I, I think this, what you're proposing, George, would be fine. We can make that modification.
That, that's what I would suggest.
Very well said, George. Kevin?
Uh, I don't have anything to add. Uh, I think, uh, it sounds like the, uh, the, the, the owner and architect might be amenable to what George suggested, uh, and it sounds like that makes everybody happier, so I won't add anything.
Yes, yes, and, and, um, thank you. And John, I, I, George, I'm glad George brought it up. Uh, you did a good job moving the garage and, and, and making space for the planting four feet to the, uh, to the east, so that was very well done. And, um, if you continue with, uh, the way you made this presentation here as a result of George's, uh, very explicit, uh, presentation, that would, I would be very happy with that.
I know, I, I think that would be great, and, uh, we can, I mean, I don't know if you guys have a few more minutes. We can discuss their kind of planting, some, something that we could do here. Uh, you know, there opens up different options. There's an existing hedge there now, but we're, you know, we, I think we'll treat it similarly to what we've done here with, uh, you know, a sort of more of a lower flowering thing. Uh, I don't think we were going to show a tree in this area, just because, again, it would potentially have, you have, you have a street tree right here. You don't need, uh, more trees there. So, we'll, we'll treat it as more of a green area that is, can be, you know, seen from the street, and we'll keep it, um, yeah, that'd be great. I think it'd be fine. We, we weren't intending to make this a parking area. It, it, it's just about backing out and getting out going forward, so that's what we'll do.
Yeah, but you know, you're in nature, it'll become a parking area.
Right, right, okay. So, we can, we can make that change.
Okay, and if you want, if you want, you can work with Suzanne as to what might be planted there, or you could just leave it as grass.
Yeah. Were, were there any comments from Suzanne on the current planting plan? Because we didn't, um, we didn't see anything from them.
No.
I, I don't, no, I don't think so.
There are no comments, no. There might be though, after you change the plantings here, but, but there aren't now.
I'd only make one, one other comment, which is, John, that, that I heard someone talking about grass and stuff like that. I, I think for your client and for the village, it, it would be, uh, beneficial for both if that was not just a, a grass lawn. But I'll leave that up to, to you guys to figure out.
I, I think it probably won't be grass. It'll, it'll be a, similar to the planting, uh, on here on this side, I think.
That makes sense, to me at least.
Yeah, it'll even be better. Okay, uh, John, you have anything else to say on this before we ask for comments?
Uh, no, no, you go ahead.
Any comments from the public? Is there any public interested in this? Sarah, do you see anything?
No one's raised their hand.
All right, any other comment from the board? No. Okay, John, you got your homework.
Okay, I mean, I.
I'm glad, I'm glad we agreed on the pavement.
So, that, my only request with this point would be to be, request to be referred to ARB and, um, zoning board of appeals, because we need a, we need a, um, ZBA variance for the, even though it's a reduction in FAR, we still need a, a variance from them for that.
Uh, I'm not sure. Ed, what do you think?
Well, I don't think we should send him to the ZBA until he goes to the ARB. And I think he should get the plan buttoned up for the turning area before he goes to the ARB.
I'd like to see the tree settled too.
Okay.
All right, John, come back.
Okay, guys. All right. All right, thank you.
That was number five. Moving along to number six. Twenty twenty zero six, Two Heritage Road. Sarah, do we have Heritage Road?
Yeah, Patty Starchar is coming on.
Yeah. Good morning, afternoon. Um, I just want to let you know, um, Laura Wakefield is here. She's the architect on the project. I'm hoping to get her out of here soon, because there's a huge storm on its way. Um, so I think we'll be pretty quick. If I go to, uh, the, uh, comments that we got from HON Engineering on May fourth for the submission then, and just walk down those, um, the first item is the one that we, uh, need your action on, hopefully tonight, uh, which is that we're covering more than the allowable, and we need, uh, to go to the zoning board for a variance for coverage. Uh, it's because it's an oversized lot, and there's a specific, uh, series of rules, uh, that we have to do. Um, so we need to go ZBA for that. The second item that they had was, um, the whole issue with the freshwater wetlands. Um, I believe that's been addressed. We got, uh, the comments that we got from HON Engineering, uh, dated June first, um, seems to go through all that, and my understanding is that's resolved, but, uh, that's really for you guys to tell me. The third item, um, was that we were showing two areas of disturbance. That's been corrected. We removed, uh, the one that we were showing for the additional landscaping. Um, we have just the, uh, limits of disturbance now on the drawing that's consistent with Hudson Engineering's limits of disturbance. We have actually, uh, brought on a additional landscape architect for the project. Uh, Susan Jantchill, um, is preparing a, or has prepared, um, a landscaping plan, uh, for the project that's specific to the site plan that we're, uh, requesting be approved. Um, she has, uh, had conversations with, uh, Suzanne Nolan on that, but, um, that needs to be submitted for the next meeting. Um, the next items on the agenda, four, five, six, and seven, were all, uh, comments, um, that were, or actually, five, six, and seven, were all comments for Hudson Engineering, which I think have been resolved, uh, but that's really up, um, to Doug. Item number four, um, is the only thing that I would need to bring a drawing up perhaps for. Um, what you had asked us to do is clarify the retaining wall, the work that was being done on it, uh, adding the spot elevations at the top and the bottom, both, uh, original and proposed, showing them to be the same. So, we did add that to sheet number eight, uh, one point three, in what we submitted for, to you for tonight's meeting. I think that clarifies it, but again, up to you. Uh, number eight is still something we need to get, which is from the owner that they have had the, uh, the survey certification. They got a survey specifically for this project. Um, I think they were put off by the surveyor who had just given the, uh, this new survey, uh, was going to charge them additional to certify the certifi, certify the certified, uh, survey, but we'll make sure that that gets done one way or another. Um, and the last two items, uh, nine and 10 pertain to landscaping, and as I said, uh, Susan Jantchill has taken that on, and I think she's got it resolved, so the only thing we're really looking for tonight, um, is being referred to the zoning board. I can put the drawings up, but I don't know if you need to see them.
When, when, when you, uh, I, I look at them, and, and you did put a lot of detail in about the height of the, uh, existing height and, and the final height being the same. Um, the only thing that would, when you, when you come back is you need a tree mitigation plan with, like, what are you replanting, what type and where? And a tree, uh, and let me finish, and a tree protection plan, like, I think it was tree twenty-four was specifically, but I'm sure there's other trees that need some kind of protection. Um, now, you've mentioned wetlands. Uh, Ed, did we get the, uh, wetland and water cost permit applications in the, in the works?
Yes, we did. We got all that, and, uh, they look okay.
Got it. And the far and coverage, uh, calculations are okay?
Yeah, there's a, he needs to go to ZBA for coverage, and that's what we, he's asking.
I know, but the calculations are correct.
Calculations are fine.
Yeah, and, uh, we're going to do special erosion control. That's all engineering later. Uh, any, any, uh, any comments, uh, from the board? Um, Sheila?
Sheila, you got unmuted.
I don't see, actually.
She's there. She's looking for the mute button. Wave your hand if you have any questions.
No question.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Dan?
Uh, I think I'm good at this point.
Good?
Yeah, Ed, I have a question for you. That's nice. Uh, I overheard, I, I missed this before about the coverage issue. Are there other oversized lots on, in this subdivision?
This, this is a, this is a very, very, very old lot, with actually a really old house. It's, it's an interesting lot. It, it probably predates the zoning for that lot.
Okay, so my question was about this, is just to, to understand, sort of, uh, if he's asking for a variance on this, on the coverage for this lot, is this going to impact, uh, others in that area for asking for the same kind of relief?
No, it's the only, it's the only, it's the only oversized lot. It's complex, but basically, the bigger your lot, if, if you have a, if you're in an IF twenty, which he is, and you have the bonus coverage of whatever the percentage is, you get less percentage if you have over forty thousand square feet an acre. So, that's, that's, most of it's interpretation, and he needs a small coverage variance if he's in an IF twenty, which he is in, but the code has a section that's interpreted as, except for the example being wrong, Patty, um, that says he's got to follow for the, for the square footage of the lot that he has. So, it's, it's, Patty, what's a square footage if you're in an IF twenty overage?
Um, we.
Percentage roughly.
What we were allowed was like sixty-five hundred square feet of coverage.
And you're, we're doing one F twenty, but we're, we have to follow the. Yeah, yeah, so what is, what, how much overage if you were, if you were in a true IF twenty without that one sentence in the code?
Oh, if we were at one-twenty and allowed that, we would not be over.
Uh, and so that's the issue, uh, George.
All right, so this is more of a, a somatic thing than, than.
Well, I don't think it's somatic. I think it's pretty clear in the code, but, um, but the ZBA rule on.
Yeah, okay.
It, it's actually an excellent section of the code. What it does is it means that if I'm in a one-twenty and I've got a sixty thousand square foot house, I can't build, or sixty, sixty thousand square foot lot, I can't build a house that's three times bigger than the other houses in the neighborhood.
Yeah. Okay, so he's gonna, he's gonna have to do a, um, he should do a scale information for the ZBA.
Yeah, the other thing about it is, uh, what put us over, we've got about a thousand square feet of existing, uh, like farm walls on the property.
I remember that, I remember that.
That's the big thing.
Okay.
George, you okay, you okay with the details on the, uh, the, the stone wall repair?
Yeah, because he kept it basically, he's documented it correctly so that it's, it's the same as what's.
Okay, that's, that's true. Um, Kevin, anything?
No, thank you.
Uh, anything from the public? Sarah, any public?
No.
Okay, so this is ready. Anybody have any, any objections to go into the ZBA? And there's two things they have to come back with when they come back from the ZBA. That's a tree mitigation plan and a tree protection plan. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you can go to the ZBA. Are we done?
Uh-huh.
Okay, Patty?
Sounds great. I appreciate it, and the deadline is Monday? Ed?
Wouldn't know. Ed?
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes. I got you. You're done. I'll let her be in the email tomorrow. Very good. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Okay, we're done with Heritage. We're moving on to number seven, which is twenty twenty fifteen. Uh, Paul and Jessica O'Reilly, Five Hillside Terrace. Do we have a presenter? Sarah?
Yes, we do.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, yes, okay. Um, give me a second. I just, this is Abdullah, Abdullah of Hudson Engineering. I just want to do a share screen just to show you the actual plan.
Sarah, did you let Matt?
Is the, um, because you're logged under two, um, is the.
Yes.
From the one where you have the plans?
The one that I clicked share screen on, I think, is right, but I don't see how to do it quite. Can you see my screen? I'm assuming not.
I will fix that for you. Okay, you should be able to share the screen now.
Okay. Can anybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, this is a relatively straightforward project. This is the existing site as it is right now. A druck in the back, existing dwelling, steps in the back, retainer wall, um, or. A druck in the back, existing dwelling, steps in the back, retaining wall. Um, we're proposing that these stones be removed and these steps to be relocated. This is a proposed improvement, a proposed patio in the back, about four hundred feet, five by five stone landing over here. The stone steps are being relocated by being shifted slightly to the left and we're catching the entire patio for the hundred year storm event. Um, and we got the comments from Han. For the most part, they are relatively minor. Um, I guess just to clarify the ones that may be of issue um, to the board, there is, or there was an exist, uh, proposed fence over here. And a wall over here, a sitting wall. Neither of those are being proposed anymore. So no impact is proposed to this eight inch tree over here. Um, and the other comment would have been related to the wetlands, just for clarification, the floodplain is this line over here. So technically it passes through a small portion of the property, but none of the work would have any impact on that. And with regard to the stream, there's no stream within a hundred feet of the work or the property. It just happens to be within an area of the five hundred year, hundred year floodplain.
On the floodplain, uh, even though there's no work in the floodplain, the, the, the rules require you to do a, uh, do a calculation and, and make that presentation that, uh, you know.
I think, I think the floodplain is far enough. Caesar, I think the, the floodplain is far enough away that uh, they're not going to need a permit for that.
They don't need a floodplain permit. Yeah, they don't need a floodplain permit, but he's gonna have to just go through our, our wetland water course ordinance. Because our wetlands is to the hundred year flood mark. So, and then we have a buffer in there. So the property's in there. So he has to show those lines. And if, if the lines show the, the construction area in that area, he just has to do a quick report. It's clear that there'll be no, um, no impacts, but he's got to document it.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's a big deal. It's, I, I know. The ZILG was involved with the, with, with the D E C on a similar circumstance where, and absolutely nothing was happening in the mapped floodplain, but it wasn't addressed.
Yeah, no, but understand Caesar, the, the property is not in the floodplain except for maybe that little two, that little.
I, I looked at it. It's, it's sitting up on a hill. I don't, can't understand how it got involved with the floodplain, but you know.
So let him put it on a map.
If it's on a map, if it's on a map, it's on the map, you know.
Right. Let him put it on the plan and we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like a big job. It's just, it looks like something that has to be documented.
All right. And, and uh, existing tree locations need to be, and tree protection plants need to be uh, need to be shown.
That's fine. We can have tree protection for this tree. We already have it for this tree. Um, nothing else is really within the limits of construction.
Okay. Would you show the protection then on that other tree?
On that, not a problem. Yep.
And um, let's see, there was another comment here. Oh, on the fencing. You know.
The fence, we're not proposing it anymore.
Are you taking the fence out?
Mm-hmm. We're not proposing it anymore. It's just a patio now. Yeah, just.
I, I was thinking that the fence, you know, you, you really can't see anything from the road, but once you put a fence there, you could, you see the big fence. So I'm glad you took it out. Um, and the uh, Doug, you need some construction details, elevation of steps and things like that? Doug?
You're muted, Doug. You're muted.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, I added that in um, number four, provide some details, architectural details for that wall and the.
And a railing to state code.
And a railing to the state code.
Not a problem.
Uh, Ed, is there any coverage issues?
No, it's, 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 it's just got some interesting issues. It's a good project. It's a compliant project.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody, uh, anybody on the board have any questions? Sheila?
No, I'm fine.
Dan?
I'm good.
George?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Kevin?
No, thank you.
Anything from the public? Sarah, any public out there?
No.
Okay. Um, take care of those details and come back and probably uh, soon on your way.
We would need ARB approval for this, would we not?
Yes, you have to get your plans together before you can go.
Okay. So we'd have to wait until next month again for the ARB.
Yeah, one of the requirements is you have all your approvals prior to submission.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we're all set. Okay, we're done with that.
Take care. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Good night.
Night. And number eight, twenty twenty fourteen. Uh, Stewart, twenty-nine North Eckers Street. Patty, do you have somebody for twenty-nine North Eckers?
The map Aaron's up. Matt can hear it. Matt, unmute.
Okay.
How's that? Is that good?
That's good. Are you able to put your plans up, Matt?
Yep.
Sarah, can you allow?
He should be able to.
Let me know if you can see it.
Now you have to start the video.
Yep. I, I hear thunder. Yeah, I know. It's pretty bad. Oh, sorry. There's a share button here. Okay. Let me know if you can see that.
I'm ready. There you go.
Perfect. Yeah, we can see it. Okay, thanks. Um, so this is um. Excuse me. I'm glad we don't have to, one second. I'm glad we don't have to go home in this storm. Go ahead. Matt Barron's on the architect and representing the application for this um project, uh, twenty-nine uh, North Eckers Street. We projected to uh, provide a new deck and stare to grade um, from the existing residents at their yacht, in the rear yard lot. Um, I did see the uh comments that we received yesterday from Han Engineering. Uh, and I do apologize, the sheet that I'm, I'm showing right now was, wasn't included in the electronic uh, submission, but was included in the hard copies. I must have screwed up. So I apologize that this wasn't uh, if you guys didn't get to see this, but this was the, the cover sheet. Um, and in terms of uh, the comments, obviously we do need uh, variances for coverage. Um, this is a, an undersized lot. It is mostly, the existing coverage already exceeds the permitted um, by a good amount. We're almost a hundred percent already. Uh, but uh, our proposed increase is, is minimal in comparison to uh, to the existing overage. And uh, I'll quickly go through some of the comments. The scale information uh, for the neighboring residents should be provided. If the board could just tell me, and maybe Ed, you and I can take this offline, just let me know, uh, how, how is that typically presented?
It's, it's difficult to, to see what's going on back there, Matt, because it's, it's, it's landlocked, it's houselocked. Um, and Google Earth only shows beautiful trees. So, so if you can do, if you could do a, just do scale of the size of the units to both sides, give us a architectural rendering of both sides. We'd like to know if there's decks to see if this deck would be too high or overwhelming over the other ones or not. Um, and then the other thing is we're concerned about trees because of the Google, Google really shows a lot of foliage back there.
Yeah.
If there's any trees impacted. What?
There are none on this lot.
Yeah. Okay. So photographs from the property line to the house and photographs from the house to the property line, showing both properties. Um, so that the board can get a better sense of what's really going on here before they forward it to the ZBA.
Hey, yeah, the concern is if, if you're at twenty-seven, the, the neighbor to the south, are you going to be looking up at a tower? Uh, you know, it, it, in the same way, the other way to the north. It's, it's impossible to tell from the presentation, uh, nor from the street because it just can't see back there. So you know, what is this, what is this elevated deck due to the neighbors to the north and south? Okay. I, I can represent that. And, and there's um, another drawing that's in the package, the, the second sheet, A zero two that shows the location map. You can get an idea. Again, it's, it's sort of a Google representation, but it does show the, the bulk of the, of the neighboring properties, both um, to the north, to the south, and also to the west. So uh, but I'll, I'll put up a little bit more clarity on um, on what those dimensions are uh, for the next submission. I think what, what Ed said, if you could do a rendering of the tree, your, your application, the house to the north and the house to the south, with a rendering of the deck and how it appears to the grade, existing grade and existing conditions on either side, uh, that would be very helpful. Okay. And I'll include photographs too. So I can put that together. And, and, and Ed mentioned the trees. Are there trees or, or, or any trees? Are there any existing trees? Are the trees? Not, not on this property, Caesar. No, there aren't any on the existing property. Okay. I'll make that statement. It's very clear. I will. And the last thing, which, which may be uh, the, the limiting factor, the, the alleyway, isn't that on the other, the property to the north? It is. And uh, we, we, we will, we'll get a letter from the neighbor saying that it's okay to, to use their alleyway. And, and Marianne, is that, is a letter okay? Marianne?
Yes.
Okay. Um, one of. Yeah, I think that was really all that really needed to be addressed. I know some of the things that um, uh, that Doug's team uh, had on here addressed things that were on this drawing that uh, didn't make it part of the uh, the electronic submission. So Doug, I'll flip these over to you. Uh, I'll flip this to you tomorrow just so that you have it. Um, but then I'll update everything else for the next submission.
Okay. If you have any questions on something, just give me a call.
I will. I think that was all I had. I think we have a lot of questions from the board. Okay, we canvassed the board. Uh, Sheila?
I'm okay right now.
Okay, Dan?
Looks good.
Uh, no, it's, yeah, everything looks good at this point. Thank you.
All right. I have no further comment. And George?
No comment.
And Kevin?
Nothing further from me. Thanks.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Is there any public out there, Sarah?
No. No one's raised their hand.
Okay. All right. Um, well, we'll see you next time. Yeah, um, I will probably, I was going to ask for a referral to the zoning board based on the amount of um, variances required, but um, I think I'll come back to you guys next month and then we'll look for the referral then if that's okay. I think you're correct. Uh, there's, there's too much of a question on what this deck is going to look at to the, look like to the neighbors north and south, so. Yeah, and I'll need to provide that, that information to the zoning board anyway. So I. And you know, like I said, the limiting factor is if you can't get back there through the, through some kind of permission to use the neighbor's property, it all goes away. Yep. Anyway, so we'll see you next month. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I think that's it for tonight. We all done?
I got one thing that I'd like to say. Sarah, you've done an excellent job tonight in the background.
Thank you.
You stole my thunder, George.
I'm sorry, Caesar.
This is pretty good, you guys. I'm, I'm pretty impressed, I have to say. Good job.
All right. Good night.
Okay. All right. Good night, everybody.